Thank you, Mayor. Item number six, we're here from Ms. Kelly Barnes.
Morning, Council.
Good morning.
Morning.
For item A, it is the Jasper Area Family Services Center. They have requested a blockage for their block party event that's on Saturday, October 11th, from a setup time of 2:00 PM and through their event time of 3:00 to 5:00 PM. The blockage requested is at their back parking lot entrance on West Kilboor Street, blocking between Hunter Street and Sherer Street. Now, item B is recovery 5K fundraiser for Sean Kelly, requested by Dustin Bonham to be held at the Courthouse Square on Saturday, November 15th, set up time of 5:00 AM with the event starting at 7:00, running to 11:00 AM. A blockage has been requested for 19th Street between Second and Third Avenues for that event. And police, fire, and the street departments have given their approvals.
Thank you. We've heard the request. If there's no questions at this time, I entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes.
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 And yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven, Lieutenant Jeremy Lay.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm here this morning on an application filed by the QuickTrip Corporation. They've built a convenience store out at 4824 Industrial Parkway. That's going to be down there by the Loves Cracker Barrel area, but this side of the interstate. They've applied for a retail beer off-premise-only application. And during our investigation, they've met all the requirements of state law and city ordinance. Therefore, the police department does not have any objection to this application.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll say it.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes.
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 And yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we're here from Councilwoman Jennifer Smith.
Um, yes. So, we have our October Board of Directors meeting that will be held this week. And I am asking to have overnight travel to my government.
Okay, dear motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes.
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 And yes. Thank you. Item number nine, Ms. Cook.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
For item number nine, I request permission to declare a 1996 Chevrolet Z71 from the Police Department as surplus property unneeded. This vehicle is currently at the landfill and it is set to be destroyed.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say the second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes.
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 And yes. Item 10, Ms. Cook.
For item number 10, I request permission to send bids for a Chevrolet Tahoe for the Police Department.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll say it.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes.
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 And yes. Number 11, Ms. Cook.
And item number 11, council members, I request permission to purchase a mobile command unit at a price of $29,500 and a Ford Explorer at a price of $37,525. The mobile command unit is under the $30,000 bid law and the Ford Explorer will be purchased off of the state bid.
Okay, you've heard the request. We discussed this in the work session thoroughly. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes.
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 And yes. Thank you, Ms. Cook.
Thank you.
Item number 12 and 13, Ms. Chalmers.
Council members, the items that Jessica just requested to send bids for, we wanted to line up the funding for that and use your opioid funds. The total cost would be $95,000. We did have a little bit of insurance proceeds from two vehicles that have recently been destroyed or wrecked this past year. So, total of $95,000 from your opioid funds. And that's just an introduction.
Okay.
And the next item that I have is to go ahead and see if the Council is now in agreement to pass our new budget for the upcoming year. We've talked about this. We talked about it at the last council meeting and at a work session in detail. The budget is a $38.7 million revenue budget in the general fund with about $1.5 million to be received from special revenue funds. This budget does provide a pay increase to city employees, which will be given in January. It will be a full 3% step increase. It also provides 85% of the added health insurance increase that the city will have, which was about another $744 a year for every employee's health insurance. The budget also provides $3.7 million for the Jasper City Schools in direct appropriation with about another additional $3 million that the city will be providing payment on the debt service for the New Jasper High School. It also provides additional funding for many of the organizations that operate here in the city. The budget will provide an additional $1 million for a new paving plan, as well as a half a million dollars for added capital improvements. And so, this is ready for your approval today if the Council is ready to allow us to begin to get our new budget in place.
Okay, you've heard the request. If there's no questions, I entertain a motion at this time, or against.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say it.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes.
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 And yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number 14, Ms. Chalmers.
And council members, we have a large number today of cost hearings. And I will read the names out along with the amounts, but you may want to wait to the very end to see if there's anyone present that would like to speak, in that we do have about 12 of them. And if that's okay, I'll proceed in that direction. The first piece of property is located at 2611 Robinwood Drive. It's property that belongs to Beth and Thomas Moon. This is in District 4 with a total cost of $23,157 and it was for the removal of an unsafe structure. We have another piece of property that belonged to Beth and Thomas Moon, located at 801 South Wawston Bridge Road, District 1, $7,145, removal of an unsafe structure. A piece of property that had overgrown grass and weeds. It's property that belongs to Roger McClory at 1102 Cherokee Road, District 4, $175. A piece of property at 2605 Ninth Avenue belonging to Anthony Dickerson, $175 for the removal of overgrown grass and weeds. Property at 302 Crest Circle, property belonging to Grand Manor Holdings, removal of overgrown grass and weeds, $175. Property at 2201 Old Birmingham Highway belonging to Eric and Leslie Carlson, District 5, $475, removal of overgrown grass and weeds. Property at 2309 Greenwood Circle belonging to Myra Craig, District 5, $325, removal of overgrown grass and weeds. Property at 701 Fourth Avenue South belonging to William Young Jr., District 4, $325, removal of overgrown grass and weeds. 2107 Corona Avenue, property belonging to Dale Brown, District 5, $325, removal of overgrown grass and weeds. 1107 Twenty First Street West, property belonging to David and Mary Tucker, District 5, $325, removal of overgrown grass and weeds. 1206 Cherokee Road, property belonging to Samuel and Tony Gillian, District 4, removal of overgrown grass and weeds, $325. Last one, property at 2609 Preston Avenue belonging to Mildred Wilder, District 5, $325, overgrown grass and weeds.
Okay, if there's one here to represent any of these properties, if you will, come to the podium and state your name and address, please. Going once. Going twice. Is there anyone present with your names being called with these addresses? Would you like to approach the podium? Go on three times. You've heard the request. Is there a motion to approve or...
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll say it.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. And thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Councilor Moore, may I make a comment?
Item number 15, Attorney...
Moore.
Uh-huh. Pardon?
I need to make one comment, or question, suggestion, ask. One of the properties that we cleared, we've cleared a couple of times. The landowner is deceased. The, we took a house down years and years and years and years ago from it. And now, it's a big lot that continues to grow. I looked it up on the tax records for the county and it's years of delinquent tax. I just wonder, we're going to keep building up, and I've got a few properties that are vacant, but this one in particular. So, just maybe something to, I'm sure you're coming up to help me with that one. Because I don't know, I mean, this has been years of this particular property with more following it. Is a tax sale a possibility soon?
I'm, I'm coming up for the, the next item, but, but...
Oh, shoot. I thought you had a...
But, uh...
Just something that we need to discuss, because that...
The code for nuisance abatement provides that the liens may be placed on the property tax bill for the coming year. We won't be able to get that done for this year because notices have gone out and, and the bills. But, we are optimistic that we might be able to begin having those collected in that fashion. Another thing, several years ago, Mayor O'Mary had us to conduct a sale of various properties. And we wanted to do it in a way that was fair. So, we had a number of properties from each council district so that no district would be, for lack of a better term, picked on or inequitably affected by that sale procedure. We probably have enough spread out, Kathy, over the city where we could do that again.
Absolutely.
Uh, so, so if, if we're not able to get the bills placed on the tax bill, we might be able to conduct another sale. And that resulted in many of those accounts being brought current. And I think, you know, not all, but, but many of them were, so...
Well, I know it's just a lot of extra work on our city employees as well to keep up. But when someone's deceased and there's no one claiming the property, that'd be great. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Robinson.
Mr. Presiding Officer and council members, our next item concerns a proposed economic development project in the city. I do not know that the application has been received formally as of this point, but we're aware that there is an application coming if it hasn't been formally submitted. Of course, our procedure for doing that is required by Amendment 772 to the Alabama Constitution, is that the council conduct a public hearing on the proposal. So, we have drafted a public notice that Kathy can publish in the Mountain Eagle and also a resolution which simply says that we anticipate receiving an application for economic development assistance from a company called Jasper Pavilion LLC, that it will be the proposed construction of a major retail facility, including retail stores, restaurants, and professional office space, and setting a hearing on that application and on a proposed agreement that we have been working on for next council meeting, October 21 at 10:00 AM. So, if the council sees fit to adopt that resolution, we can get that hearing set and they'll be here to answer any questions and anyone else can be heard. It'll be a full-blown public hearing. But again, and this will be in the public notice, but the entity to receive the benefit of this development agreement is Jasper Pavilion LLC.
Okay. You've heard the request.
I'm so excited.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes.
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 And yes. Thank you. Item number 16, Adam Bolt.
Council, I'm here today to request for Jasper Housing Authority a waiving of a roofing permit.
Okay, we've discussed this in the work session. But do, if no one have any other questions for him, I entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes.
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 And yes. Okay, thank you. Item 17, Mr. Bolt.
I'm here to request a waiving of the permit for Walker County Community Action Agency. And it's another building permit.
Okay, you've heard the request. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes.
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 And yes. Thank you. This time, we're here from our city planner, Mr. Brent McCaughey. Item 18 through 21.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
Um, the first item that I've got is to ask you to consider approving closing of a portion of Birmingham Avenue between 19th Street East and 20th Street East for the morning of October 8th and through the evening of October 15th. This is due to construction needs with water sewer that will be crossing the road related to the Tezekis and other retail development that's going on on the corner. It is very possible that it will be closed and opened and closed and open multiple times during that process, but it would be easier just to close it for that seven days if you approve that.
Okay, is there any questions for him? He mentioned this at the work session, but someone might have other thought process. Anybody? If not, I entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes.
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 And yes. Thank you. Okay.
Uh, the next item I see is a resolution to declare nuisance abatement, grass and weeds. I have them for two properties. The first, we have a vacant lot. So, I have the address is 8th Place Northwest. Do have the parcel number 641702043000012.002, in District 4. And this is for grass and weeds.
Do you want me to go ahead with the second one?
Yes, please.
Okay.
The second one is 1208 Ellis Street, District 4, overgrown grass and weeds.
Okay, you've heard the request. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Say it.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes.
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 And yes.
The next item we have is a resolution for nuisance abatement on inoperable vehicles. This is the one portion of our code enforcement that operates backwards to everything else. Prior to us going forward with an inoperable vehicle under state code, you have to declare it an inoperable vehicle. On the others, we do it first and then bring it to you. So, you would be declaring, and I think we have some photos, these, uh, one, two, three, four, it's about seven automobiles as inoperable vehicles that would allow us to go forward with the removal of those. The first one is at a parcel 641705164000129.002 on 29th Street East in District 5. And you see the vehicles there. The next one is 2810 Birmingham Avenue, District 5. The next one is another parcel, 641705164000109.002, Corona Avenue, District 5. The next one is also a parcel, 641702043000012.002 on 8th Place Northwest, District 4. The next one is 2301 Gamble Avenue, District 5. The next one is 904 Robinson Street, District 1. And then, the final one is 2706 Birmingham Avenue, District 5. And Lieutenant Allred asked that I publicly make a comment that making sure everybody understands inoperable vehicle by definition means it can't be operated legally on the street. So, it doesn't necessarily mean it didn't run. If it doesn't have a tag or something else, it's inoperable.
Okay, we've heard the request from our planner. What do I hear?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes.
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 And yes.
And then, the final item that I have, I've a little bit got hat in hand because I'm the one that proofread this. But a couple of council meetings ago, you approved the update to our fee structure for permit and fees. And everything that was presented in that meeting in his own record is correct. However, the document that I handed you had typos on it. So, that's on me. But we are asking you today to consider an adoption of the ordinance by unanimous consent to amend and correct our published permit fees.
Okay. This time, I would entertain a motion, a second, that the rules be suspended and unanimous consent be given for the immediate consideration of the action on said amendment, a budget amendment.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion, all in favor, let it be known by saying yes.
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 And yes. The motion for unanimous consent for immediate consideration of said action has unanimously carried. I will entertain a motion at this time, and a second, that the budget amendment be finally approved. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes.
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 The motion, say, and yes, I'm sorry. The motion for the approval of said amendment has been unanimously carried, and the budget amendment has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll recognize Ms. Georgie Anne Guthrie to discuss an unsafe structure at fifteen twelve William Street. Ms. Guthrie, can, Mayor, can she use your microphone?
Let me have mine, you can use mine.
Reach. Yep. Ms.
Thank you. My name is Georgiana Guthrie. I own property at fifteen twelve Joe, uh, William Street. I received a nuisance abatement letter last month. This is the second one that I have received. Three years ago, I received one. I brought it up to date according to code, my property at that time, and as I said, I've, I've received another one three years later. I, I don't think I should have received the second one. I'd like some kind of decision on that. Since I met with you all about three weeks ago, I have contract, I have contacted contractors, the list of things that are on that abatement, abatement list. Contractors say that's not the case of my property. Again, I don't think I should have received the second letter, and I, I would like for you to disregard it.
Let, let me tell you where we're at in, in terms of procedure. This notice was mailed out August fourteenth, wasn't received until close to the end of August. There is a thirty-day period in which a property owner may request in writing an appeal. However, our notice actually provided a forty-five day period, which is more generous than is required, because no one's trying to mistreat anyone or, or be unfair. So, we are within forty-five days of receipt, and, and this is the first meeting of the council even following the thirty days of receipt. So if the council desires to permit a hearing on this matter, and I believe that you are authorized to do so, that hearing must be held between five and thirty days from the request. Again, the request is supposed to be in writing, however, the minutes of this meeting are transcribed, and if the council chose to treat that as a written request, I believe that you are capable of doing so. And y'all could schedule a hearing that could be held at a regular meeting or at, or at a specially set meeting sometime between five days from now and thirty days, and allow Ms. Guthrie to present any evidence that she wishes to present. Of course, the city would also present its information and its findings, and then the council could make a decision as to whether that, whether this property constitutes a nuisance as being an unsafe structure. If someone was dissatisfied with that decision by the council, there is a proceeding, a procedure for a further appeal to the circuit court that anyone may take advantage of. So that's where we are procedurally. I think that you would be within your purview to treat this as a written request for an appeal, even though it's being made orally at a council meeting, and I think that you would be legally able to set that hearing, and we can conduct that hearing, and then the council can decide, because I think it's fair, before we ask y'all to vote on declaring something a nuisance, that y'all hear as much information as Ms. Guthrie wants to give about it.
Russ, no, declared your own safe charge.
That's correct. It has not been declared yet. I, I believe, and Adam, correct me, it was gonna be on the agenda for the twenty-first anyway.
So we could have the hearing on the twenty-third.
Or the seventeenth.
Or call a special meeting on that next work session, just to hear that. Okay, um, we can give her a hearing at our next work session before or after work session start, we'll call a special meeting on that day.
That's the seventeenth?
Yeah. I'll just give me a.
The seventeenth?
October seventeenth, yes, ma'am.
I should be here for a hearing about the property.
Yes, if our attorney tells, we can do that.
And that work session begins at noon, and I understand y'all want to do this at the conclusion of that work session, so it'll be sometime shortly afternoon.
Yes.
Could, could you tell me what day of the week?
Friday.
Friday. Okay, thank you. That's good. Thank you.
Okay. Do we need to add any formal motion? Okay, at this time, we will hear from Ms. Stacy Smothers. Thank you, Ms. Guthrie.
Counsel, I apologize for not having this to you Friday, but the problem just started Friday, so I just received the quotes about twenty minutes ago. We have two fan motors that are absolutely down on the dehumidifier, out of the six. In June, we replaced two, so this is the second set of two, and the third set of two are right behind them, and they are gonna give us a discount on labor if we go ahead and replace the remaining four at one time. The price has gone up a little bit since June because of tariffs, these, this equipment comes from Canada, but the savings on labor brings it back down to about the same. So in June, they were eighteen thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars. Two of them would be nineteen thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars, and to do all four, it would be thirty-six thousand one hundred and nine dollars. I'm requesting this as an emergency, as these need to be replaced right away. You all did receive an email that has more information from me this morning, but that was before I had the actual real quotes.
Yeah, and, and I'd like to go ahead and declare this an emergency. I think if we don't do it, there's gonna be much more expensive damage.
These are moving pieces that will break apart and cause further damage within the unit.
Okay, do any of you all have any questions for her? The mayor has declared it's an emergency, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes.
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 And yes.
It's an emergency.
You gotta go through this.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion and a second, that the rules be suspended and unanimous consent be given for the immediate consideration of said action. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes.
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 Okay, the motion was unanimous, was for unanimous consent for the immediate consideration of the said action has unanimously carried. Now, I will entertain a motion and a second, that the budget be amended for the finally approved for said action.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes.
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 Okay, the motion for the approval of the budget amendment has been unanimously carried, and the budget amendment has been approved. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll receive any comments from the audience. If you have any comments, you please go to the podium, state your name and your address, which district you live in, please. No one has any comments, at this time, we'll receive comments from the mayor.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you all for passing the budget, getting that done. I think it's a fair budget, both for the taxpayers and the employees, and it covers multiple issues. It also maintains a budget surplus, which is very important, especially if you look at tough times when they appear. One of the things with a budget surplus that allowed us to do, Marilek, Josh was at a meeting with myself, with Director Boswell and Director Poulos, we're looking at numerous grants for infrastructure, and the question kept coming up, do y'all have the matching funds? And many cities don't, and this allows us to be in the queue to get grants to help with our infrastructure, with us being able to match the funds, which are anywhere from fifty percent to as low as twenty percent. So thank you, thank you, counsel.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Okay, are there any comments at this time from any council members?
Yes, I first off like to say, glad to have Will Bryce here with us. Thanks for being here. And secondly, just wanna thank the Jasper Fire Department. I have never, I have danced with the fire department, but I have never seen them actually. It is a fire safety awareness night, and I was able to see the instruction that they go through with preschoolers, and it really made a difference in seeing how that some of the children were scared when they put the big gear on, but then how they warmed up to them, and that's so important if there's a buyer, if your child doesn't wanna run. And they did a fantastic job with three pre, preschool classes at one time, all were attentive. They also danced with us, but that's a wonderful program, and I'm, I'm very proud to, to have gotten to see that, and thankful for it, so, thank y'all.
Thank you. Are there any comments from any other council members? Okay, nothing else, at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes.
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 And yes, and thank you all for coming out. Meeting's adjourned. All in.